Which means we have four.
Okay.
Robert, Carrie, Sunny, Ruth, Fred.
Oh, Sunny is on the line. Okay, I didn't know she was on the map. Okay.
Ruth, are you still on? Ruth was on a minute ago.
She is.
Here I am.
Okay, on.
Hey, Ruth.
Hey, Carrie. I'm bad with my mouth. Well, I'm struggling, Ruth, being a virtual speaker, so.
Did you never talk to me this day?
Yep.
Nine weeks.
If everybody's ready, we can go ahead and get started. Can everyone turn your cameras on? And we'll go ahead and get started. I'm gonna let Larry know so that he can go ahead and do the audio so that we can stream live. Because you know, this is livestreamed. We are required to make sure that we do everything by roll call, so that when you all vote, you'll have to do a roll call vote. And so I'm supposed to remind you of that at the beginning of every meeting. We have to do the roll call vote in compliance with city policy and state statute. Because this is a public meeting and you are a public board. So is everybody clear about that?
Yes.
Okay, Fred, can we have you back? Because we only actually see two commissioners. Fred, can we have you back if you're still on the call?
Yeah.
Okay.
Leave him.
Hi, Sala. Hey, everyone.
I can see everyone.
We just can't see you. Hey, Josh.
Hey, sorry, I was having fits getting signed in, but finally got here. So here we are.
That's okay. Hey. A few of us had a few challenges like that, so you're in good company. Okay, so we are streaming live now, so Robert, we're going to hand it over to you to begin, and then we'll go with the order of the agenda, okay?
All right, that sounds good. Can everybody hear me well? All right, I am completing the July 29, 2020 Human Relations Commission's meeting to order. At this time, we'll ask Carla Duncan for our roll call, please.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
All right, Commissioner Lee?
Present.
Commissioner Wiggins?
I think she said present, Carlin.
Yeah, okay. Commissioner Bloomfield, he's gonna be late. Commissioner Haynes?
Present by telephone.
Okay. Commissioner Price? Commissioner Sartain?
Present.
Commissioner Samara has requested an excused absence. Commissioner Taylor?
Present. All right, thank you.
Chair Leek, would you like to have the commission to vote on the excused access request from Commissioner Samara?
Correct. Can I get a motion?
Oh, sorry, Robert. This is Sunny on the phone. I was going to make a motion to accept the requested absence of Commissioner Samara.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Hayes, you have a second?
Second.
Thank you by Commissioner Sartain. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, please.
You have to do roll call with Chair Leek.
That's right, I forgot. Okay.
And you can do it in any order. You can just go in the order the way you see everybody on your screen.
That's right. Okay. Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Sartain?
Aye.
Commissioner, I mean, Vice Chair Commissioner Wiggins?
Aye.
Commissioner Price?
Aye.
Commissioner Hayes? Commissioner Hayes?
She made the motion. Do we need her?
Fine.
Okay, all right, we think we lost. Okay. All right, thank you. And I forgot to mention this before we actually got started, that this is a special call virtual meeting. So we have some important business that we need to discuss in regards to our future human relations department, but also some, all some, some, some future projects that we are hoping that it will make an impact as well for our department as well for the city of Salem. At this time, we're going to, what our time next, which would be our June Human Relations Committee meeting minutes. You guys should receive, you guys have already received those in your packet. You guys need your second to receive those minutes. All right, if not, if not, is there a motion to approve the June commission meeting? I see you're happy. Sorry, you gotta, you don't meet yourself?
Motion.
Commissioner Sartain, can you state your motion, please?
I'm making a motion to approve the minutes from the June meeting.
Motion, motion made by Commissioner Sartain to approve the HRC meeting minutes. Is there a second?
Commissioner Price, seconds?
Second by Commissioner Price. Okay, we're gonna do another roll call. Commissioner Taylor? Commissioner Taylor?
I think there's a signal issue with Commissioner Taylor.
Okay.
Yeah, still can't hear.
Oh, you can hear.
Okay. Yeah, we want to, Commissioner Taylor?
I can, I can barely hear you, but present, yeah?
Voting approval for the minutes. Commissioner Taylor, we're voting approval for the minutes. So could you say aye if you approve?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Vice Chair Commissioner Wiggins?
Aye.
Commissioner Price?
Aye.
Commissioner Sartain?
Aye.
Commissioner Hayes?
If you all can hear me, aye.
We can.
Okay, great. My answer was aye.
Thank you. The minutes have been approved. All right, now that we're gonna go into our discussion in regards to our ad hoc June Chief Committee recommendation, I'm going to, Ms. Wanda, if it's fine tonight, allow Commissioner Hayes to discuss this recommendation. That is fine.
Sure, and I would, I also have an update to go along with Commissioner Haynes' comments.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Hayes, can you update us and also give us the progress in regards to this June Chief recommendation we are proposing to the HRC commission tonight?
Hey, I might have been confused. Are we talking about the June 12 proclamation or the ad hoc committee recommendation?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I forgot. Yeah, it's because Commissioner Bloomfield is not here.
Yes, I can fill in somewhat.
Okay.
No problem, Chair Leek, and to also call on our graduate intern Sala Majid, who worked on this as well. But Sala, would you mind going ahead and I'll save my update for after you brief the commission? Can you just tell them about what you did and how you did it, and a little bit about where we are now from your understanding, and I'll help you out. No problem.
Okay, can, I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes. Um, hey, everyone. So a couple of weeks ago, Wanda asked me to start putting together just a list of localities, states, counties, municipalities that had passed some sort of ordinance recognizing Juneteenth as a holiday. Now, this could have been either, you know, just, just for June 19, 2020, or it could have been a recurring annual holiday if they're recognizing official celebrations, if these were paid days off for city employees and or state employees. As of now, I believe in North Carolina, there are two, two, um, two localities, and that would be Wake County and then the City of Greensboro recognizing Juneteenth as an official holiday, and that would be annually. I believe there are forty seven states.
Sorry, sorry.
I believe there's forty seven states that recognize Juneteenth as a holiday. There's some sort of celebration going on. But in terms of paid, a paid holiday, it's usually, I think it's just four states. And that would be Texas, Pennsylvania, New York, the state of New York. And I cannot remember the fourth state. But those are just for state employees. Is that about due?
Thank you, thank you, Sala. And Commissioner Bloomfield did work on drafting a resolution from the Human Relations Commission to be submitted to the city council. And he also went as far as drafting a new code for the city ordinances. And so he really did outdo himself. He said he got help from an intern in his office, so we do appreciate them. I have also spoken with a couple of our city managers and assistant city managers, I should say, and I've since learned that there will likely be a proposal moving forward to the city council next month, from a city, from a council member, about this very issue, about Juneteenth being a paid city holiday. And so the thought is that the resolution from the Human Relations Commission would be included as being in support of and endorsing any type of paid city holiday for Juneteenth that would be brought forward by the city council. And so it's really great timing, and all of the work that Sala and Commissioner Bloomfield and his intern put into it will be somewhat included and referenced in whatever moves forward to the city council in August. So, words, you know, it's good that the Human Relations Commission was timely and should be included in whatever moves forward.
Yes, that's awesome.
That is wonderful.
Is there any discussion from the commission before we make this recommendation vote?
So Chair, just to be clear, the commission would need to vote tonight on the resolution, as Commissioner Bloomfield has drafted it, and also on approving the language that he used in the city code in order to assist the city attorney and or others who may like to reference this in any way.
Correct.
So, changes or amendments, you all would just vote on that? You'd have to have a motion and so forth?
Correct, correct. All right, there's some discussions. We especially thank Commissioner Bloomfield and others who actually helped craft this recommendation resolution to recognize Juneteenth as a city, hopefully a city paid holiday for everyone. It remembers, but also to just, you know, recognize the sacrifices that were made in regards to ancestors and those ones who have paved the way for all of, for African Americans to actually have their rights here in America. So with that said, is there a motion to approve the June Chief resolution?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Sartain. Is there a second?
Second, Commissioner Price.
Second by Commissioner Price. All right, Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Hayes?
Aye.
Commissioner Price?
Aye.
Commissioner Sartain?
Aye.
And Vice Chair Commissioner Wiggins? Commissioner Wiggins?
I see her, her microphone is on mute.
Yeah, it is.
And Chair Leek, we need for you to vote as well, just to.
Okay, I will.
We have a form.
Commissioner Wiggins? Vice Chair Wiggins?
Yes, aye.
Okay, and I'll vote aye as well. Thank you, guys. So everybody, give some round of applause for this effort, and we thank, we especially thankful to Commissioner Bloomfield as well. Thank y'all so much.
Yes, I'm so excited about this.
All right, so, like I said earlier, this is a special virtual call meeting, so we've been moving and shaking. We especially thank our staff as well for helping us along the way also. With that stated, as I stated earlier, we are, we have been discussing in regards to our future for the Human Relations Department, and so there's been some conversation, discussions. And we are tonight talking about those recommendations. So in regards to the ad hoc staff retention recommendations from, um, to commissioners, so I'm going to actually allow Commissioner Vice Chair Wiggins to speak on this, and Commissioner Hayes, if you can try it, and my apologies, I've been at the meeting all day, so that's why I've been, um, this is some of the names, but Commissioner, Vice Chair Wiggins, can you, um, in regards to the staff retention recommendation?
Yes. So, um, this, I wanted to, a way to just thank the Human Relations staff and create an opportunity for growth within the department. I was talking with Wanda and sharing my thoughts, and so she had been having some of the same thoughts. And it is just creating a, a tier opportunity within the department. Because we value the HRC staff, we value the work that you all do in this community, the work that you do to support the staff, I mean, the commissioners, and we wanna, we want to keep, we want to keep the staff together. We want you all to feel valued and to create opportunities for the staff. So, I went to, uh, went to Wanda and shared my thoughts, and so with that, idea was birthed, and Sunny Hayes actually helped us continue to bring this forth with input from Wanda. So Commissioner Hayes, would you share with the committee what we put together?
Sure. So as Vice Chair Wiggins just said, the thought behind this, Chair, Director Wiggins, and also Director Alma Abrahah, Wanda, as well, was that there was a tier position. So we have put together a staff retention recommendation, and the main sections of the recommendation talk about the critical work that the Human Relations Department currently does. It's very lean staff of five city employees, and then we go into the rationale towards the key positions, which part of that is reducing employee turnover. And with reducing employee turnover, that also eliminates some of the knowledge loss that can occur when you have employees who leave the employ of the HRD for other opportunities with city employment or otherwise. So really, we want it to end sort of a dead-end job placement and create opportunities for advancement within the Human Relations Department to incentivize employees to continue their careers within the department. And as an extension of that, our recommendation, our hope is that we will all be well-served by that, including the commission, the committee, board, and council that the HRD is the administrative body for, as well as all of the community outreach that the Human Relations Department does every year for the benefit of local and citizens. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Price, you have your mute button on. I see you talking, though.
Thank you, thank you. I had more dogs barking, so I flipped it on real fast. Was there, and I, I, super apologized by Mr., was there a document kind of defining this role, or is this still in development?
There is a recommendation drafted that has many details about the specific positions that are being recommended.
And that did go out to the commission? Everyone see that as part of their packets?
I must have missed that. I apologize. I will go look at it now.
Okay, Commissioners, did you get that? Did everyone else get it?
I don't have it.
Nobody got it?
No, I didn't.
It's not in here. Yeah, it's not in here.
Okay, all right.
Yep, I just looked. I had it, I had it on my computer anyway, but I don't see it with my other.
It's not there?
No.
Right, I don't see it in the email.
Okay, give me a second. Let me get that out to you while our apologies. I thought that it was included. Sorry about that.
No problem.
But really, we just wanted to include, like Commissioner Haynes and Vice Chair Wiggins stated, a way for staff to be able to pursue promotional opportunities within the Human Relations Department. Because we do have a very talented staff, and we want our staff to be able to be in a place where they feel like they can advance and grow in the field of human rights, rights and human relations. So that's a really important thing to have in place.
I think it's a wonderful idea, and yet, having such kind of rich institutional knowledge, it's, it's very painful to watch people go, but if they don't have a career path, then it's perfectly reasonable that people are going to need to leave at some point. And so I, I'm very supportive of this. This sounds like a fantastic idea.
I agree.
And Commissioners, I am, I'm going to forward the email to you as soon as I go in here.
And can we just give the commissions just like at least one or two minutes to just review before voting?
Oh, absolutely. That's, again, you know, my apologies, I thought that it was included in what you had.
You know, a lot of thought went into this process. It wasn't something that was just happily done. You know, we all value the work, and to be, to have, to be a part of this commission, to me, it's a, it's a badge of honor, and especially when the work that we're doing in this community is being sought after, after city, after city, after city, is reaching, reaching here to Winston-Salem for what we're doing, that's a true testament to the dedication of that office and that staff. And I'm just excited to be a part of the work and to be a part of this group.
And thank you, Vice Chair Wiggins. We do have a very hard-working staff, and we have a hard-working commission as well.
Thank you. It's a team, team effort.
Yes, it is. I agree.
Very much so.
Okay, so do you all have it? Hopefully you have it in your inbox? He's not letting me know.
Not yet, but I'll keep refreshing.
Okay. Carlin, you see it?
I don't see it yet.
Say yes, I think, Carlin. You got it? Ruth, you get it? Okay, thumbs up from Ruth.
I keep meaning, I'm like Josh, I've got dogs in the house.
Okay.
They like your voice, Wanda, and they bark.
That is so disturbing. I don't know how to.
They like.
It's a compliment? We'll go with compliment.
I don't know if that's a compliment or not.
No, it's lyrical. It's lyrical. It's your intonation or whatever.
It makes me think about a dog whistle, you know?
Yeah, well, that's why I'm, my husband just, my husband just put them outside, so.
I'm so sorry, Ruth. Oh, my God.
No, listen, I'm glad. They need to be outside.
My husband will love this when I tell him.
Yeah, well, they were voting before it was time to vote. They were going, aye, aye.
I see the draft.
I got my draft, Wanda.
Oh, great, okay.
I'll receive mine.
I got my draft as well.
Okay, awesome.
So we'll take about a minute or so to, for everybody to review it, and for those ones that, uh, who have been, who did work on, I'm sorry, on a recommendation, um, to Commissioner Hayes as well, Vice Chair Wiggins. Thank you guys so much for your, your time as well, your willingness as well. So let's take about a minute or so to review it, and then we'll come, and then we'll, I ask for a motion to adopt this recommendation.
Looks good, Sunny. Wanda, looks good.
Right.
Hopefully everyone will be able to get behind the recommendation, so we'll be able to let the city manager's office know that it was unanimous. Yes.
Yes. Yes. And so what would happen if it's, if everyone agrees, or if you have, you know, majority to agree on it tonight, it would move forward, Commissioner Haynes, and it would, it would go on from you all's ad hoc committee, or actually from the whole commission now, to the city manager and assistant city manager for their review and consideration, and then if you wanted to meet with them or discuss it with them, you would be able to request that as well.
Okay.
All right, have, anybody had time to review the recommendation?
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the HRD staff recommendation?
I make a motion that we accept the HRD tier restructure for the Human Relations Department.
I second it.
And second by Commissioner Sartain. Commissioner Sartain? Commissioner Hayes?
Aye.
Commissioner Price?
Aye.
Commissioner Sartor?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
And of course, I say aye as well. Thank you guys. It has been adopted. Thank you guys for all your, all your, your hard work, Commissioner Haynes as well, Commissioner Vice Chair Wiggins. We appreciate you guys so much for rescuing this plan for the tier for the staff moving forward. Thank you again.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
We appreciate your vote of confidence. Yes. And thank you, Commission, for your vote of confidence in the staff. As you know, some of you veteran Commissioners will recall that at one point in time, the majority of our staff had actually received Employee of the Year in Winston-Salem fashion. And so we really do have a top-notch staff.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
Yes, we do.
Exactly.
Very well deserved.
The best. My favorite.
And thank you all, as well the staff, as Goyd, as all the colleagues have stated as well. Thank you for your hard work. So just looking out for some great things moving forward for the HR Department. Thank you. All right. Now.
Sunny, thank you. Oh, thank you so much. It was a pleasure to work on it. Thank you for the support from the Chair and the Vice Chair, and thank you, Wanda, for your input as well.
You are more than welcome. My pleasure.
Yep. Yes, Wanda, yes. Thank you for being receptive and open.
Absolutely.
To the idea.
Absolutely.
Okay, all right. So moving to our next item is the Remote Neighborhood Trust Talks recommendation. So this is something that is dear to my, as you guys know, that I am a grassroots leader and a servant to the community. We had a trust talks, was it last month? What was that month? What was it?
Yes.
What was that?
I think it was in June.
Okay, it was in June.
I think so.
Okay, okay. But this is something that I have been discussing with Wanda for a while now in regards to hosting a Neighborhood Trust Talks with the Police Department, and talking about issues that are relevant in our city, but also in our neighborhoods. So during our trust talks last month, I felt like that some of the neighborhood leaders and some of the neighborhood issues, their concerns were not addressed during the trust talks, and some of those concerns were given back to me. And so, of course, as serving as the Chairperson for the Human Relations Commission, it is my job to make sure that we're not only just representing just one pocket, but represent a broad residential, essentially, and I wouldn't say an area. So I propose the idea to Ms. Wanda to host a Neighborhood Association. The only difference would be, would be, it would be Neighborhood Association leaders in their neighborhoods, or other neighborhoods, and they would actually be discussing concerns or issues that are relevant in their neighborhoods. And I think a lot of times, we find that in our communities, that we have the same issues, but sometimes the issue may not make it on the news, on Channel 12, or even on the other side of town. They may make it on the news. So with that said, that I think it would be a great way to us to do that rapport with neighborhood leaders in the city, but also hear their concerns as well, hear their solutions in regards to working with these, and that will build that chariots of that trust within the community. But we do know that we are in a sensitive time in our country. But we don't want the sensitive moment to continue, you know, another year or so. So we would want to build that rapport with our neighborhoods, and we want to hear what are their concerns. And so I brought out an idea to Ms. Wanda, and I was hoping that we could probably potentially do a Neighborhood Trust Talks potentially in September.
And I think, Commission, Leek, we did talk about the virtual Neighborhood Trust Talks, and we said we would certainly want to do it in the fall, right? We said.
Correct.
Okay, and so we, I think, talked about maybe looking at doing it prior to the holidays.
Correct, correct. Around the fall, correct.
Okay, okay. And so at this point in time, you would be entertaining a motion to move forward with trying to develop that? Or is that, is that what you feedback?
Correct, correct. So basically what I want to hear right now from the Commissioners, are you guys interested in moving forward, you know, in hosting a Neighborhood Trust Talk sometime in the fall?
I am.
Yes, that sounds like a great idea.
Yes.
I agree.
Sounds like a wonderful idea.
This is Sunny on the phone. I think it's a good idea. I recalled that there was some hesitation on the part of the Police Department to do trust talks virtually. Have those concerns been alleviated for them?
Actually, they had those reservations prior to the Town Trust Talks. The feedback that I received from the Chief was that she was pleased with how Town Trust Talks went. And we were just trying to picture what it would look like, because you know what our normal format looks like. And so just trying to imagine, how do we do that? I, you know, I reminded her that we can always customize the format. And so that's what we did for Town Trust Talks. And so we would likely do the same thing for Neighborhood Trust Talks. We would customize the format as needed. And I know my staff has told me that there's a way to do breakout sessions. I think Jameson, Paula, or both of them.
That's what I was thinking about.
That there's a way to do breakouts on this virtual platform. I don't know if we would do that or not, but certainly, you know, we could explore that. But the thing is, we don't want people to feel like they can't be as frank and as candid as they would be if they didn't have a camera pointed at them, especially in the breakout sessions. Because if you recall, whenever we have the media to come to trust talks when we're doing it on-site somewhere, we oftentimes add audio on when they're doing the breakout session so that people can feel like they can talk freely, unless they don't mind. We just have to be mindful part of it. So it would just be a matter of, do we do it with the breakout rooms, or do we not? But the overall concept with the virtual trust talks, I think it would probably work, Commissioner Haynes, because it worked pretty good for us with the Town Trust Talk.
Okay, that sounds good. And I've had a little bit of experience with the breakout platform, breakout function on Zoom. We've done it for mediation. It works generally well. I can't say I trust it all, I can't say I trust it all the way, but it works well. It seems to.
Sunny, we've done, we've also done those with schools.
Really?
Like in small groups, like breaking out in grade levels. We've done that.
Oh, that makes sense.
Yep. And I think, I think doing the breakouts would give individuals an opportunity to share and feel like they can be open, because when you look at, as Ravi stated, it looks different based from community to community, whichever part of town you're from. It looks different. I was traveling down Liberty Street on Monday, and Liberty, there was this group of individuals, a group of citizens, and they were putting on and inventing. It was just, it wasn't a real big thing, but they were feeding people in the community, and while they were feeding them, they were trying to educate them about what's taking place in the Cleveland area with the crime, and how they're willing to have that addressed so that they can decrease the amount of crime that's taking place in Cleveland. And so you're right, some of the time when you hear what's taking place in the community in some of these neighborhoods, it's always after the fact. But what are we really doing? Are we listening? Or when they're listening, you know, what is, what is the follow-up from that? And are individuals feeling like they're being heard by the entire community?
Well, how would you all envision the breakouts for the trust talks? How, because, you know, one goes in their own areas and they have to break out. So how would that be synthesized? Everybody would be doing the breakouts at the same time. We usually have at least four breakouts, so they would all be going on at the same time. So how would that work? For somebody who's viewing it on camera, how does that work?
Okay, so this is what we did. So I did a virtual presentation with Winston-Salem State with the Education Department. And so how it worked for us is that we were all together, you know, with the opening piece and giving, you know, their instructions and how it was gonna flow.
Right.
So what we did was, once we concluded that the initial session, we broke out into different groups. So there were moderators, and then there were students that were in different, different rooms. And then I was in a room, you know, doing another presentation to a group. And then we got back together. At the end, same what we do, but it was just done virtually.
So I guess the comment is, is that how would the public view that? If we're breaking out in sessions, would there be some type of intermission? You know, with the, you know, because if we're breaking out in sessions, I would hopefully be able to participate as well within the breakout sessions.
And the public, you know, with trust talks, the public is not participating in the breakout sessions. They are already, they're, because they're already in them. So I don't know if people could just be. I don't know if people would just be assigned to that, or, I don't, I don't know how that would work. But those are the things that we would have to figure.
Okay, if we don't have breakout sessions, I guess we'd have to have a regular trust talk. But what I, what I don't want is to turn into, is it to, is it to a townhouse-style meeting, you know, meeting. Because the truth is, is that there are individuals that who are upset, you know, in regards to the police and the sensitivity of what's been occurring in our country. But I do not want that to, you know, make an impact on the HRC. So I don't want it to be a town hall conversation and point of fingers and all of that. We want to, you know, be with these neighborhood leaders, but we also want to also create solutions with the police department.
What do you think you could, you might, you could talk to, this might be something Larry could help us with. Maybe that's something they could, maybe that's something they could help us come up with a format.
We would, we would work with marketing, explore some possibilities, but I think we just have to manage expectations as far as how this would look and what the, what the format would be like. I don't know that it would be like a typical trust talks, because again, that would be the larger issue, is everyone is breaking out in small groups simultaneously. How is anyone who's looking on, how are they supposed to be able to hear all four of those groups at one time? And then to do them one at a time means other people are gonna be waiting, and so, I mean, it's, that's, that's the challenge. That's the challenge. So I think that the format would have to be changed. And if Chair Leek is not in a town hall style format or a panel discussion format, I don't know what the other options are. So that would be worth exploring and to see if it's feasible.
Yeah, and you know, I'll say this, that the neighborhood leaders in the community, they're already stating that they don't want a townhouse-style conversation, conversation, you know, virtual meeting. Do they want to be able to actually have that, you know, intimacy with the, with the police? So they can understand their issue.
And if that's the case, Chair Leek, it may be that we would need to take police's recommendation and wait until it's safe to have that in person, because that was their recommendation.
I was going to suggest, I mean, would there be a way to just limit the participation to the number of people who would be in the breakout rooms? And then, I don't know if there's a way for someone to record those individually. I suspect there's probably a way to do that, but then offer it as a recording later. That way you don't have it where people are trying to watch one breakout group at a time and in, in real time, if that makes sense.
So it wouldn't be live. It would be pre-recorded.
Yeah.
Exactly. And it would only be live for the people who are actually there to participate.
Right, right.
That's good.
But they would still participate virtually.
I like that.
Yeah, I like that.
Right, right.
Yeah, that makes sense. As long as it's not, I was picturing live, like we did for the Town Trust Talks. It's have to be live, and I think that's a great idea. I think this seems beautiful.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I like that. Sunny, kiss your brain. Thank you.
So Chair Leek, so would you want to go ahead and ask for a motion?
Yes, but before I do that, is there any other questions or concerns?
Hey, guys. I just, I just like popped on the phone thing here.
Hey, Jeff.
Can I ask, can I ask what our motion is?
Hey, Jeff.
Hey, how are, how is everyone?
Doing good.
Good to hear your voice. We are currently doing a virtual trust talks, Neighborhood Trust Talks, and how that would look, and the fact that it would be easier to record it versus doing it live for the sake of the breakout groups.
Yeah. Seems like live would be difficult.
Yes, absolutely.
Are there any other formatting changes we would want to make? And I don't think so. I'm just kind of trying to replay trust talks in my head, where we would kind of provide some, some subject matters, some thoughts for the breakout groups to look at. And we'd obviously try to make sure that there were a certain number of officers or Police Department in each breakout group, and then a certain amount of the public. Any, any changes? I don't think so. I think, like, Chair Leek, was there anything kind of in the nature of the concerns that were given back to you that would make you think that maybe we need to address very specific things? Or like give people a little bit more of a platform to make sure that their concerns are exactly spelled out, rather than us kind of providing subjects? Do we need to kind of take subjects in from the public? Or do you think we can kind of cover that with fairly broad statements? Any, any thoughts?
Can we, can we not build, can we, and this might be, I think, but can we build, can we build from the land trust talks? Is that possible?
That, that seems, seems reasonable, yeah.
Chair Leek, what do you think? Because this is more your vision. Or would you look at it as being some fresh things that we would need to address from a neighborhood perspective?
I think, I think we need to look at it from a fresh lens, you know, to these issues. Because no neighborhood, like I said before, no neighborhood is a lie. Some concerns that I did, I'm sorry, that were addressed to me with the trust talks, but before the trust talks, that some of the neighborhood leaders thought that they were going to be addressed by Chief Thompson or Sheriff Campbell, one of his crimes in the neighborhoods. The second one was building that trust with residents in the community. And there was two more, but I put it back. And there was two more, uh, but I put it back, um, because I'm also part of a group that's called a Coalition for Neighborhood Association Presidents. So they had, uh, posed some questions to me, to me, to, um, to the, um, for our, our trust town hall, uh, meeting last month. But those concerns were not addressed, because it seemed like that more of the focus was on police brutality because of the nature of what we had dealt with, you know, in March and April and all that. So, um, that's why, like, here we go again, you know, we're, we're in our neighborhood, but no one is actually hearing us, what we're dealing with constantly, constantly, you know, in our communities. So, um, I think that we need to look at it, you know, with our, uh, first lens.
Okay.
Chair Luke, uh, have, have you, uh, identified your leaders and kind of, um, gotten perspective on some of the issues that they may be having in their neighborhood? And if so, how many have you talked, talked with?
Correct, so you guys know that I am president of my neighborhood association, so. So, uh, but of course, I would not be representing my neighborhood association tonight. But, um, there is not my neighborhood association president that, and I, I do not know here in the city, because I have been rapport with them over the years. So, um, we had already talked about and discussed, um, and I sent to Ms. Wanda, um, in March about, from the Coalition Neighborhood Association Presidents for creating a trust talks. But we knew we didn't have the, the, uh, the marketing, um, and we didn't have the tools to actually, um, bring it to fruition. So that's one reason why I just brought it back up to Ms. Wanda, because before this even happened in regards to George Floyd, I had already briefly spoke to her about this like two years ago. So I think it's just the perfect time to build those relationships and those rapport. Not just with, but even with our, uh, HR, um, you know, um, senior, um, commission as well, department as well. Um, because like, uh, like Chair, we could say earlier, and our recommendation, that believe it or not, a lot of individuals, they do link up to the Human Relations Department as to go to, oh, department to help them to show me the broader issues. Sometimes, I hate to say it, but sometimes a lot of individuals come to the Human Relations Department, they will go to the Police Department, or before they will go to the NAACP, you know? So, um, they're very trusting. But, um, I think that we can take that trust a step further, uh, with our leaders and, and these communities. And, um, um, I'll be happy to, um, for those concerns to you, give Ms. Wanda, um, as a time, you know, we can get the plan is from the, um, the leaders. But I will say that they, there were our leaders that were upset from the town hall. Well, first of all, they loved the town, that, that was the HRC, um, put on. But again, they felt like that they were, their questions and concerns were not answered. So I'd be, I'd be,
The focus, the focus was a little different. It wasn't, so, yeah.
Yeah, and I'll explain that to them as well.
Okay, okay.
Okay, great. Thank you for the extra, uh, extra explanation, Charlie. That's fantastic. I think, I am, I am definitely in support. If there's no other conversation, I'll go ahead and make a motion then, to, uh, to pursue having the, the trust talks in this fall at a date to be determined, to be determined later, I assume. And to, uh, to pursue that with the, the neighborhood associations and the police department.
All right, permission, pardon, there's a motion, permission, question, a second. Second by Commissioner Taylor, Commissioner Vice General Wiggins.
Hi.
Commissioner Haynes.
Hi.
Commissioner Sartan.
Hi.
I say aye as well. Thank you guys for your help in this, um, project. And we, I, and we, Neighborhood Association leaders, we'll be looking forward, uh, partner with the, um, HRC for this trust in the fall. Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you, Commissioner Lee.
Absolutely.
All right, so we're almost done. I just want to, also our next item, of course, my chair personnel updates. Um, on item eight, in regards to the vacancies, of course, you guys are aware that we've been trying to work with the, um, mayor's office secretary in regards to the applications and where, where are they at? You know, we're trying to appoint someone, um, to the commission, but not just that, but allow us to retrieve those applications. But it looks like now that the mayor's office has, um, appointed three, um, commissioners to, well, I'm sorry, they're appointed, but they're gonna, and they're gonna vote for it after August 30th, city council meeting. Ms. Wanda, I don't, I don't have the names, we're gonna discuss the names yet.
Well, no, because it's only a recommendation.
Okay.
It's, it's in draft form, but it's important for the commission to, that, um, there have been three people who've been recommended, but it has not been reviewed by the council yet. And my understanding is, it's, um, a black male, a white female, and a Hispanic female.
Correct.
Also, my understanding is that Commissioner Bloomfield, Commissioner Sartan, and Commissioner Wiggins have been reappointed. And so that does not mean that you've completed one term. It may just mean that you've completed whatever term you were in, because as you all know, you can come on the commission, um, filling in for someone's unexpired term. And if that term was halfway over already, then you are entitled to do, to two additional full terms that are fresh. So that is what has happened in the case with Commissioner Beans and, and Chair Lee, and maybe a couple of others, is that they have stayed on longer than the six, because when they came on board, they were filling unexpired, unexpired term that someone left open. But anyway, that's, that's the understanding that we have.
So there has to be a recommendation, um, from the mayor's office and, um, they would be, um,
For three seats.
For three seats, correct.
Which would lead to?
Which lead to, correct, correct.
What do we need? What, what are we, like diversity, what are we looking for?
Well, it would be good to have, um, Eusebio actually replace, you know, um, his Hispanic male. And we don't have an Asian, we have an Asian female. And white females. We have, who do we have white females? Ruth and, Ruth might be the only white female. But, but again, there's a white female that's being appointed.
Did Barbara Lee, did Barbara Lee?
Yes, her, her second term expired.
So I'm the only white female?
Until August.
Well, yeah, I mean.
And then we have white males, um, we have Jeff and Josh. And we have black males, uh, Robert and Fred. Black females, Carrie and Sunny, so we're,
What about like Indian, how about like?
Seda is, that's Asian, and we do have Seda, but that's what, it's an Asian male.
Okay.
Because we used to have Manginath, um, a couple years, Manginath is gone. I'm sorry, Ruth, I'm exciting your dog, I think. Sorry, I was trying not to talk. So that's where we stand.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, so, um, just be looking now, just, you know, if, if you got, if we see renewed, our faces added to our HRC family. So, um, but, you know, for a while, we said that this has been, um, a real struggle trying to get, you know, um, individuals on our commission because of, you know, the situation. But at the end of the day, you know, we're, we're grateful that, uh, we could potentially have three new, um, commissioners added to the commission, so. In regards to Nick. Okay, in regards to the HRC meeting schedule, um, we will begin zooming back, meeting back in August and September. Um, but we do need to, rather, because, as you guys know, that we do be on the fourth Thursdays every month. So the fourth Thursday does fall, um, in November on Thanksgiving, Thanksgiving. So we need to vote for the fourth Thursday to, um, not have a meeting. And then also in December, because of course, the city hall is closed, uh, we will not have an, uh, open house. So, um,
Chair Luke, we don't know yet about open house?
Okay, we don't.
Or you all just usually don't meet in December, you take a holiday hiatus?
Correct.
In November, um, you usually move your meeting up a week? And then in August, you usually have a retreat? And it would be up to the commission as to whether or not a regular meeting or not meet at all, since you're meeting this month? It would be up to the commission, um, what the remainder of the calendar year would look like for you. But for now, from what we know, there will be virtual meetings unless things dramatically improve with the pandemic.
Correct. So we need a motion to, well, of course, we are gonna be in August and September. Correct.
August is up to the commission, since it's supposed to be off this month. You ended up meeting anyway to do that. So it would be up to you, um, if you want to take August, since, you know, the retreat is not going to happen. Um, but September, you, um, well, September would be an option too, and that was gonna be in my direct comments. But really, if, to try to pursue having a high school race relations forum virtually, it may be something we can explore. And if so, and if it happens in September, that would take the place of your September meeting, the way it normally does. I just don't know if we'd pull it together that quickly, but it's tentative, it's something we could work on and try to, um, e- explore with the schools.
Okay. Well, how does the commission feel about taking off August, since we are meeting, um, tonight? For our special virtual meeting?
That mean we don't, if we choose not to meet in August, that it makes us meet in September, October? No November or December meeting?
You usually do meet in November, Commissioner Wiggins, it's just that it's a week up, the fourth Thursday.
Okay. Okay.
I think that makes sense to take, take August off and then plan on the, the high school race relations in September and then standard meetings in October and November. Kind of get us, get us into the winter.
That was good.
Was that a motion, um, Commissioner Price?
It is now. I motion to, uh, to, um, to skip our meeting in August, to plan at the moment on replacing our September meeting with the high school race relations meeting, and then to have, uh, our standard fourth Thursday in October and a third Thursday in November. And then to, at this point, plan to take December off, although we could certainly discuss that in future meetings.
I thank you. Commissioner Price, can I second?
Good job, Jeff.
Commissioner Sartan, second. Uh, Commissioner Taylor?
Yes, I second that.
Okay, Commissioner Sartan?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiggins?
Aye.
Commissioner Haynes?
Aye.
Okay, of course, I support as well. Thank you guys, thank you all. And thank you for that question.
Commissioner Luke, who second that motion?
Uh, Commissioner Taylor.
Taylor, okay, thank you.
Okay, moving down to our group's updates. Uh, Ms. Wanda, I'll answer.
Yes, thank you, Chair Luke. I only have one brief update from the staff, um, and this is something really, um, not protocol, but I have to say it anyway. I would like to, um, congratulate Jamie Waldeck on her engagement.
Yay, congratulations.
Yay, Jamie.
And so we, we welcome all good news at any time, but I told her, especially in the middle of a pandemic, we really like having good news like that. So Jamie?
Yeah.
To congratulate you on behalf of the staff. And, uh, I don't know if I can say anything to everybody?
Um, thank you, and I can't wait to see you all. We can talk about it.
You gotta flash the ring, Jamie.
Oh.
There you go.
Yay.
Does everybody know that Jamie's marrying Jamie?
Yes, Jamie and Jamie.
Jamie and Jamie. How about, um, how about, um, tell me about your, do you have a baby yet?
Do you have a baby yet? No. But Jamie does have two kids, and so we do have, there are, it is a,
They're wonderful.
It's a, it's a new, new family for me.
So congratulations, Jamie, I just wanted to say that, congratulations.
Thank you.
I meant Jeff Bloomfield, do you have a baby yet? Not you, Jamie, I'm talking about Jeff.
Yes, he does, Ruth, I do believe, I don't know if he's,
Jamie, I wasn't asking if you had a baby, I was asking if Jeff had a baby.
And also, I would like to congratulate, um, Sawa Majee. She has finished up the course that she has been working on that pertains to the internship. However, she's not leaving us, which is good to know. She's gonna continue working with us, yes, as a graduate intern. Would you like to tell them about what you just completed?
Uh, thank you, Wanda, I'm happy to stay on with Human Relations. This is an awesome staff, uh, and an amazing commission. Uh, I just completed my first year in the MPA program at UNCG, so I'm going into my second year. This was my halfway mark, uh, and I'm excited to see what's left in store.
Congratulations, Sawa.
Congratulations.
Yes, so those were my staff updates. Um, that's pretty much all I have, and I would defer to Adolfo to brief us on the statistics and, and, um, other items he may have.
Yes, yes, hold on now. Um, sorry, my computer is not working as it should. And I have a little devil next to me, he will not, uh, so please bear with me. So, okay, so for June 2020, we ended up the year, uh, if we, if we look at the, um, at the accumulation of cases, for June, we ended up with 644 cases. Which is, which is about normal. If we end anything between 650 and 750 cases is about our, our, um, our normal. We had a lot of inquiries, inquires in June with 72. Then we also finished with 10 cases of, um, of, of HD complaints. So, um, we were a little bit lower than other years. We had been, I think last year we were like 18 cases, so we were a little bit lower. At least, but anything between 10 and 15 is also our normal range for us.
And that is for the housing discrimination cases?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, yes, yes. The 10 cases for the housing discrimination cases. Thank you all.
You're welcome.
And I think, and I think that, that's, that's about, I, I could say, I didn't see anything out of the ordinary, uh, with our numbers. I thought, uh, with the COVID-19, our cases were going to dramatic, dramatically, uh, decrease, but it didn't happen. They, they remain more or less in the, in the range that we normally, normally have.
And Adolfo, for you and Iris, I would like to say great job, because for two investigators to handle approximately 700 cases and their housing cases on top of that, two people for a population of approximately 250,000, that is a real, real, um, big deal. So I know Iris, you joined us in December, you,
Thank you very much.
So Adolfo kind of carried that, um, until Iris took on board, so major kudos, major.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Commissioner Wiggins.
And I think that's all we had, right, Adolfo? Okay.
Okay, uh, thank you, Adolfo, we appreciate that, uh, as well, as Iris may not, thank you so much. Jamie, congratulations on your engagement, hopefully your wedding will be as big as my, my's was, so. But, uh, much, much, much closer to the wedding planning as well. And thank you, Ms. Wanda, also for all of your insight, as well, your, um, your, um, communication towards, uh, the commission, we really appreciate it.
No problem, you're more than welcome.
And Commissioner Hayes and Commissioner Wiggins, thank you guys so much, you all so much for your effortless and, um, uh, putting together a staff tier plan, and also to, um, Commissioner Bloomfield as well for working on our junior teams recommending. So we have some deciding, um, uh, things that are moving forward, and, uh, potential holidays is going to be observed, um, in a certain extent on the city, all because of the hard work that you, that we all have done together as a team. So we really appreciate it, um, on behalf of this committee, but it's basically, uh, me as a chairperson, I appreciate you all so much, thank you for your support, awesome. So, uh, is there any other announcements, discuss, comments? Anybody have any babies, I was like?
Uh, boss, yeah, boss and Commissioner Leek, if I can add something? Thank you, it is, it is, we'll be very, very brief. This Saturday, there is going to be a, an event, uh, by the, uh, it's a, it's an initiative by the Forsyth County Health Department. We're going to be at the, uh, at the Enterprise Center from three to five P M. This distributing, um, uh, food, and face masks, and gloves, and information, mostly to the Hispanic community, but everybody is welcome to this, to this event. And is to try to combat the, um, COVID nineteen rate of infections among, amongst the Hispanic communities. I think I've told you in, in this forum before, that I was, we were given the day, the numbers, uh, today. It's still fifty-five percent of all the, the, of all the infections of COVID nineteen in Forsyth County are Hispanics. And that's a lot, a, a big, big number, so we're trying to do our very, very best to try to decrease that number to, um, I don't know, to, to, to acceptable levels. So these, the first event of this, this campaign is going to be this Saturday, the first of October, again at the Enterprise Center in nineteen twenty-two, Martin Luther King Junior Drive, is in the Watown area, if you guys are familiar with, with that.
Uh, and Adolfo, you meant the first of August, right?
Is the first of August, is this Saturday, boss?
Yes, that's correct, yes. And Adolfo, thank you for all the work you've been doing with Hispanic outreach and attending the virtual meetings and so forth, thank you for that. So, um, just wanted you to know, Adolfo, continuing to stay engaged with the Family Justice Center, and with the new director, Hannah Hamlin. And so, Adolfo, and commissioners who've been attending those meetings as well, thank you. We hope to work with them on the capacity of Hispanic outreach as well.
That's good, that's good. All right, well, well, as we'll say at church, my parts and minds are clear. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes, sir.
There a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion to adjourn by Commissioner Price, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Commissioner Wiggins, uh, Commissioner Taylor.
Aye.
Commissioner Sartan, is she? Commissioner Haynes.
Aye.
Commissioner Price.
Aye.
And of course, aye as well, thank you all, have a good day, please, Ms. Wanda, so say?
Thank you to marketing.
Thank you, marketing.
Yes, thank you very much.